Call the Board of Supervisors into session for our Monday, November fourteenth meeting. Good morning, everyone. We'll start with public comments. At this time, anyone may address the board on matters of which are on the agenda. Please go to the podium, state your name and home address. Individuals wishing to comment on a public hearing will be given the opportunity during that respective hearing. Individual remarks are limited to three minutes. Do we have anyone in chambers wishing to address the board? Seeing no one in chambers, do we have anyone online wishing to address the board?
We do not.
There are no proclamations for this meeting. We'll move to the approval of the minutes of the meeting of November seventh, two thousand and twenty-two.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the November seventh. Minutes, all in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we have consent items, recommendation from the county assessor regarding the two thousand and twenty-two allowances and disallowances for family farm exemptions. Want to have questions on that?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent items, eight.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the county assessor allowances and disallowances for family farm exemptions. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. There are no procurement procedures for approval at this meeting. Next, we have a public hearings.
Did we approve the notice? Do we know that there was notice provided? Is that in the packet? That it was published? Like a proof of publication?
That was last week, I believe.
Correct, the proof of publication was, was on last week's agenda.
I, I do recall that, but I'm wondering that, I always thought that was together with the public hearing. Just to show that it was published. Do you know what I'm saying?
I do, it's a, we did publish it last week. We can add it in the future. It's just one extra page that, you know, procedural wise, we are properly published and that was notified last week.
Public hearing is reference zoning case, hash mark, one, zero, dash, three, zero, dash, two, two, Matt and that Smith, A-one agricultural, to A-two agricultural residential. Need to go into public hearing?
I would like to try something new today. This is the auditor speaking. For public hearings, going by Robert's rules, we don't actually need to take a vote to enter into a public hearing. It's a, it's a unnecessary recorded vote that we're adding on to our agenda, onto our minutes each week.
Can I make a recommendation? We save changes till January one?
We can do that.
Thank you. What? Old dog, new trick. I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, open the public hearing. Do we have anyone wishing to address the board regarding the rezoning request?
To hear from Tammy.
Go ahead, Tammy.
All right, so, the applicant's request to rezone from A-one agricultural to A-two agricultural residential, three point five, five, three acres, to create one acre lot for their son before the sale of the remainder of the farm. This property was adjacent to the city of Upworth along Classic Road and, and is legally described as northwest of the southwest. Section fourteen, T-eighty-eight North, R-one W, Taylor Township, Dubuque County, Iowa. The property is owned by Matt and Annette Smith. Zoning in the area includes A-one agricultural to the north, the south, the east and the west. A-two agricultural residential to the south and east on zoning case number zero, four, seventeen of eighteen was to survey off two existing homes on the farm to allow for the construction of a new home. There are no previous zoning cases attached to this property. There are no special use permits attached to the property and six notification letters were sent to the property owners in the city of Upworth was notified. Comprehensive plan, chapter nine, agriculture, natural resources, page one thirty-four, objective three point one, and chapter eight, housing, page one twenty-two, objective twelve point seven may apply to this case. So this case went in front of the zoning board and when it went in front of the zoning board, um, they made changes that night. So it is now been approved by the zoning board so that they can have only one home on this A-two on the twenty acres because it did not meet our ordinance. They were trying to put two homes on there and the family agreed to that. And there is a plat coming back in following with those changes. So the request that originally came in was asking for two homes on a twenty. Um, the family conceded that night with the zoning board and the zoning board forwarded six to zero in favor to allow for only one home on that twenty.
So, how big is the A-one and how big is the A-two?
So we're still, we're still looking at a balance of three point five, five acres for the A-two. It's just not going to have two homes on that and the total of the whole acreage is like twenty acres.
Does it need to be three point five acres? Can you, it's the whole shaded area there, so it's beyond?
Yeah, and it did because it includes enough of the, the buildings, as you can see, the surrounding buildings. And so it really did need to include that. They were just going to keep this other portion so that if the son wanted to build in the future and across from Kitter Road is, is, is the city of Upworth. And so they know in the future, if they want another home out there, they'll have to annex this into the city of Upworth and see what Upworth will or will not let them do.
Yeah, a couple of questions on it. The three point five, five, three is the shaded area, correct?
Correct.
Why would we be drawing a line through a building?
Be, because they're going to own the rest of the property. So they were just trying to square this off and I know Mr. Schneider is on that could answer more questions about this, but then originally that was thinking they were going to put the son in this other piece. And so some of these buildings are older, but they're still maintaining the twenty acres and they still farm it. So they're still farming, I believe they're sheep farmers out there yet. And so they're still filing a scheduled F and all the tax things. So they're still maintaining twenty acres as farm ground. The rest of it, they were selling it off.
In the paperwork, it says they were surveying this three point five off to sell the rest.
They were, they were keeping the three point five, five for the zoning request so they could sell the balance. So the rest of the farm, I believe, has even been auctioned already. So all they were doing is trying to separate this three point five and the A-two because we had to make that rezoning request. So we could make them legal here. Originally, they were asking for the son to build a house out there, but now they're not doing that. That's where the three point five started.
Right, but I guess I don't understand why we would make a property line through a building because forty years from now, when they don't own it, that's going to be, that's going to create a problem.
It's not a property line, it's a zoning line. So that will not be an actual, like, separated piece of land. That three point five, five, it's a zoning area and, and Mr. Schneider is showing you the zoned area.
I would remind the board, we are in public hearings, so if there is anybody who would like to speak, we tend to be leaning more towards discussion right now.
But the question I have is how does this fit A-two if they're not going to, if they're going to sell off the property?
Because they're maintaining twenty acres of farm and they are farming that twenty acres. That's how it makes it D-two. So if you go ahead, Kevin, if you can scroll. So the twenty acres is going to be maintained around where you can see all the farm buildings are and it's coming down, yeah, and it'll be down into that piece. And the balance of that property has, I believe, been auctioned off.
So what is the zoning? Why do they need an A-two? It's an A-one right now and they're going to continue to use it for farming.
Right.
Don't understand why it needs to be rezoned.
It needs to be rezoned because they're requesting that for financing. And so when they're, they're requesting it as well because they're looking, it, I can, so Mr. Schneider can tell you too. They're coming in and asking for the rezoning because they were trying to separate this out from the original pieces. And when they first came into us, they were asking for the A-two for two. We wouldn't let them do it. They're asking for the one so that if for someday they ever want to sell, they've got a separate piece that's not separated, but it would be zoned correctly that they could sell off any land in the future if they wanted to, one of their kids or something.
I don't understand if it fits A-two.
Because they're still farming and they're separating from the farm. But they are separating most of the land, but it does fit A-two. It allows for them to keep a home out there and continue to farm.
But there's no change, there's no reason to.
There is a change, there was a change and the change was, the change was the amount of land that they originally came in with. And their original request was for the two. They were asking to have two homes on a twenty for A-two. They're asking now for one home on that twenty. And if for some reason in the future, the farming wouldn't exist, then if they had to sell off the rest of the land, then they would still have their piece of land zoned properly for residential use. Meaning around their current home.
I guess I'm a little confused on it myself. I, like, they're just basically trying to get this to a A-two that, then they'll come back in and put another house on it because it is A-two.
No, the A-two stops it from having any other houses. Because they've signed a conditional agreement that says on that balance of their twenty, they cannot have any other homes.
Tammy, you mind if I speak related to this? Dave Schneider, Schneider Land Surveying, nine oh six First Street, North, Farley, Iowa.
Go ahead, Dave, open.
All right, this is actually a lot simpler than you guys are making it. Ultimately, they've got a hundred and twenty acres here. They are putting up the bulk of it for auction on Wednesday this week. They wanted to retain twenty acres around their existing home, uh, which is on, on the area that we're A-two, uh, doing the A-two. The whole reason we did this larger area was because they were interested in reserving a parcel for their son. So we started through the process with that in mind because I said, if we go through just doing your home, we will not be able to come back and ask for another one because ultimately there will be a condition on the entire forty acres that this existing home sits on. The reason we went through to the A-two or with once, after the discussion about them not wanting to give uh, the son of a potential building spot on this, I basically said, we're going to keep the same A-two zoning area because if we don't, we got to come back. We basically are going to put ourselves out another month, come back, resubmit, pay more fees. So I said, it ultimately, it makes no difference because we're going to end up with the existing home on an area that's rezoned to A-two. And the main reason we're doing that is because we don't have thirty-five acres in the remainder. We can hash what the size of a farm is all day, but ultimately in the A-two, there is no, there is no restriction on area on the A-two. The only thing is that we have a, a condition on there that ties up approximately forty acres with that home or the remainder of the tax parcel. So ultimately, that's why this thing ended up looking like this. It, it, it started out as an attempt to create a, a A-two zoning area for the existing home and an additional home. Ultimately, we removed the additional home for the son because obviously people didn't think the son should be able to live on, on this piece of property ultimately. So we, we basically used the same zoning area and pushed it forward. It's, ultimately, this thing's going to end up with two agricultural lots and a twenty acre little farmette that ultimately the current owners of the property are going to retain and continue to live in the house that's already on it. So virtually nothing's going to change except for the sale of two parcels that meet ag requirements.
So again, correct me, Dave, if I'm wrong. You are not parcelling off the three point something acres. That is just the rezoned area in the twenty acres. You are going to parcel it?
That, no, we are not going to parcel off that three acres. It's so, it's being, uh, the owner, the current owners are retaining twenty acres with their existing home with the understanding that if they ever want to divide this again, they're going to have to annex it into the city of Upworth.
So what is the, what is the zoning on the seventeen acres remaining?
It remained, it remains ag.
A-one, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and so the reason we're changing this to A-two is not to continue a farming operation because that can continue, they're keeping twenty acres.
Well, but our farming, our farming shows in today's standards for plating thirty-five acres or more. So what they've had to do is prove to us they're farmers. So we're saying if they A-two, well, that's the current plating ordinance. The plating ordinance now says it has to be a minimum of thirty-five acres to be considered a farm automatically. Otherwise, they have to show us that they're farming and prove that they're farming, which they've done that. And that's again where I say the sheep farming. But remember when they first came in and they were not looking to just do one, they were trying to do two. So Mr. Schneider's saying he's asked it to move forward for the A-two. It doesn't allow for any more houses. And in the future, if this family decides to sell off the balance of the property and not be a farmer anymore, then they have a zoned area that allows for that.
My concern is this. Mr. Schneider just told us that this creates a farmette. Right, it creates a farmette. And we don't have farmettes in Dubuque County land use. That's not a concept that we have zoning for. The zoning to be A-two is to support ongoing agriculture, not to get it. And, and there's no change in their agriculture. Their sheep farm is unchanged whether we rezon or we don't rezon. That doesn't matter to them tomorrow. It's the same. So the purpose for the A-two then is to take an unnecessarily large piece of land, which creates precedent. You or your successor will stand before us and say, no, no, you do create farmettes. You did one here this morning. That's my concern, that I think zoning and land use needs to be careful because we do have impact down the road. The fact that this came forward, still with this idea that they originally asked for two houses, which is completely contrary to the, the topic of an A-one. I am surprised it's moving forward completely unchanged because that was decided by the zoning board appropriately. Of course, we don't have two houses in A-two. And now it still looks like that. I don't understand what we're not just doing. And then my question ultimately is, if they're sheep farming on twenty acres, why am I rezoning this to a new zoning situation? There's no reason for it.
And again, we've explained it, that's because in the future, if for some reason they decide to get out of the sheep farming and they're not going to maintain the land, then that rest of that land can be sold as agricultural and they would maintain a home site for themselves. That's again, not their intention, but what Mr. Schneider has done is worked with this family to say, if this would happen, this is where, this is how you would do this and why. So I, I understand what you're saying, Ann, but we have done these and we don't call them farmettes. That's not the word we usually use because with a, in a sense, everybody's called them farmettes in the past. But there really are small pieces of farm that we can, you know, two acres, ten acres, apples, you know, that's a lot of, that's a lot of apples. So they, they have met every standard they need for us to do this. And it, it did fall under the A-two and it did not fall under the A-two for two houses, obviously. And that was taken care of through the zoning board and that's why they agreed. And the family agreed to move it forward and to make it six to zero. And they were also trying to, as Mr. Schneider said, meet some timelines.
Why did you bring it forward? When it violates the zoning to have two houses on the A-two, why did our zoning administrator bring it forward?
Because I don't refuse to let anybody ask for what they want. I tell them, I inform them, which I did on this. I let them know that it wouldn't go through, but it's not my job to tell them they can't ask.
Agreed. Can I get a word in?
Yes.
Get it off, I was able to. Um, so I think if you read the A-two, you know, zoning, the way it's listed, it's to preserve farmland. And if you make this change, it's still agriculturally zoned. And so they are sitting right next to the city of Upworth. So if the Board of Supervisors wants to discourage land use within our own zoning, the other choice will be for them to go to the city of Upworth. And that will set a really strong precedent for less agricultural land. We have that precedent in City of Sageville. And that's went to the review board at state and they are in the city of Sageville. So if you think the county board can stop this, um, from going to the city of Upworth, you're mistaken. And if you want to preserve agricultural land, then you allow the ownership of the agricultural, whoever owns the agricultural land to maintain that. I, so I mean, I, we've done probably a hundred A-twos in, in my time and the sky's not falling. Um, we've got a lot of critics in this board or one critic on this board related to everything the zoning board does. But things appear to be functioning well and the citizens have right for their land use. And this is, seems pretty straightforward from my seven years.
And I would, I would agree with you that obviously if it doesn't get approved, they annex into Upworth and the whole thing could turn into a subdivision. I understand that also. I just had some questions as to why it had to be as big as it is. You know?
And then that is, that is part of the three point five, five was to maintain that amount of land so that, you know, and that's not a huge amount of land for a homestead. Three point five, five acres is not an oversized lot. I mean, a lot of our subdivisions have two acre lots. So this has got existing buildings on the property. So, so again, you know, th- this is a request. I mean, you, you know, do what, make a decision you want to make. The zoning board voted in favor of it and the conditions were made and the conditions were that no other homes could be built on the balance of that land. And again, there is an auction, as you heard Mr. Schneider say, for the, the rest of the hundred and something acres scheduled for Wednesday. So they were trying to make sure that they had all their basically ducks in a row before this auction took place. So they actually put an auction off so that they could get in front of this board.
Uh, Tammy, I'd just like to make one more comment. This is doing exactly what A-two is intended to do, is basically, uh, no matter what the size of the parcel, there is no size dictated on the A-two. It's basically allowing a home to exist out there and it's basically putting a condition on a larger area that no other homes can be built to preserve the rest of it as farm ground. The fact that they've got some, always had some sheep and, and they've always, uh, pastured them out there and, and harvest hay off for them. They basically are reserving what they need for their operation and selling the rest of the farm. The main reason we submitted the A-two, number one, is because it's not thirty-five acres. And number two, they made the comment, they were interested in be able to reserve a lot for their son. That's why we petitioned for the A-two upfront and asked for that. I said, because if we go in with your lot as, as one lot for your existing home, you will never, ever come back with a condition on the remainder of the forty to come back and ask. So that's why we asked. Um, nothing, nothing more direct than that, not trying, we did it basically to be upfront with you folks and say, these people were interested in two lots out there. The only way we could petition for that was to ask for it. What, if we did not, we would have been denied upfront. Um, or when we came back to ask for it the second time because we would have had the condition on. This thing was set up so that ultimately if we did not get two houses on there, it was set up to basically back it off to the current rezoning area that you're looking at with the one home that's already there. So ultimately, whether you do this as an A-two or whether, you know, we come back in with a plat and say, okay, we're just going to call it all ag. Um, you know, then somebody can come back later and apply for an A-two and, you know, try to build another home out there. Let's say they've got, um, forty acres down the road and want to, you know, reconfigure this thing. We're just, I guess, we try to guess at what your ordinance is. Every day, we try to basically show everybody, we try to basically set this thing up so that it, number one, allows the property owner to petition for what they want and obviously have to settle on something less than that. But ultimately, the intent of this is they're going to retain their existing home, own twenty acres and we're going to put, put a condition on forty that no other buildings can be built on that. It's, it's really that simple. Thank you.
Dave, this is really just a question for you. You keep referring to forty acres, that's where I'm getting confused here.
Yeah, typically, it's been the, the, um, the policy, I guess, to put a condition on the remainder of something that no other homes can be built on it. The whole purpose of the A-two zoning was to minimize density in the county or maintain the current allowable density. When I, when I look at this property out there, if you're saying thirty-five to forty acres is the size of a farm, according to your ordinance, they, in theory, there's a hundred and twenty acres there. They could have three, three homes out there as a minimum. Ultimately, by putting the condition on the remainder of this tax parcel or the remainder of the forty, then in theory, we've, we've done our job of maintaining that density. And in theory, there's other parcels out there that could, because they meet the ag requirement, could have, because there's two, going to be two other lots when we're done, could have two other homes on it. So we haven't created any increased density. We, that is the whole purpose of the A-two zoning from the get-go was to control density out in the county.
Okay, but you, again, you're referring to the forty, we're only dealing with the twenty acre spot here, right?
Yep.
Everything else, correct?
But we've done stuff very similar where we've had three acre parcels and put conditions on the remainder of the forty that no other homes can be built. It's really no different than that.
Right, I understand that. I was just confused as I was taking that this is only a twenty acre parcel and you were referring to forty acres.
Yep, it would be no different than having a three acre parcel on here and putting the condition on the remainder of the forty.
Right, then the other question I had, on most of these rezoning cases, all the buildings are in the rezoning area.
Not necessarily.
All of them that I've seen, all the buildings were zoned off.
No, not necessarily. We've just zoned houses off, we zoned houses and sheds off. Ultimately, if they ever try to do anything out there, they're going to be back in front of you or they're going to take this thing into Upworth. So if they take it into Upworth, this A-two zoning goes away. If it comes back to you guys, you're basically going to deny them because they already were approved for their one home. So it's pretty much irrelevant, uh, you know, where, where the rezoning area is because it's really nothing more than a line through the property.
Right, I understand that, but like I said, all of them I've seen prior to this, all the buildings were included in it. And I was just kind of curious as to why, you know, we wouldn't have had to move the line very far down to get all the sheds in and.
It, it really came down to what we did was we included the area where the son was going to uh, build his home and went directly, took his south line and went directly east. And basically, his parents were going to own the remainder, the nineteen, I think, if the son's one acre came out.
Okay.
Basically, what it came down to is if I changed the zoning description, we had to restart this thing over. So we just kept pushing it through with only one house on.
Dave and McDonough, uh, if we deny this request today, does that in any way impact the pending auction?
Does what impact the auction?
If this is denied and it is not allowed to become an A-two as it's currently shown to us, does that impact the auction on Wednesday?
Not if the plat's approved. If you leave it A-one and approve the plat for the other two lots that are being sold that meet the thirty-five acres, it's, it's, it's irrelevant. But again, th- in theory, then there could be four houses here rather than three. If somebody came back and petitioned for, for an A-two on, on something else. So in theory, this is doing a better job of controlling density than if it's left ag, ag.
And that was my point as well. So, you know, this isn't an R-one, this is an R-two. It's not, it's not, it's not designed to be a subdivision. This is agricultural two. And they are adjoining the city of Upworth, which cities have very, very dense areas. And so if the board is intent to preserve agricultural land, you think this would be a yes. If you want to send it to the Upworth and tell the property owners that we're not interested in working with you for your agricultural purposes, vote no.
Th- this is doing exactly what you want in controlling density by allowing you to tie up that twenty or forty and minimize this thing to three houses rather than ultimately more than that.
Thank you, Dave. Do you have anything further, Ann?
No.
Further, Jay? Oh, I'm good. Any further comments from public regarding the issue? And entertain a motion to go on?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to close the public hearing, all in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Issue at hand, any discussion amongst my colleagues?
Well, it seems to be confusion. So, you know, maybe we need additional work sessions on usage of A two. We've done well over a hundred in my area in my term. Seems like the board continues to trip up on many zoning things. When the zoning board continues to vote overwhelmingly in favor of these items. So there's, and maybe we, maybe we, you know, in the end, if it passes and it passes unanimously, then it's just discussion. Which is. Part of the process and a little bit painful, but. Like some of us are not on the same page.
Any comments, Anne? I have, I just had some questions as to, you know, why the lines were the way they were. Because all of the previous ones had included all the buildings. The zoning board has approved it. We've approved numerous ones from A one to A two. And basically encompassing the building areas, whatever. So I have nothing further on it.
I will not be voting in favor of this, so someone else can leave.
I'd make a motion to approve the rezoning.
I will second it.
Have a motion and second to approve the rezoning. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, Nate?
Aye.
Make a motion to suspend a requirement that this amendment be considered and voted on for passage at two prior meetings.
I will second that.
Have a motion and second to suspend the requirements. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, Nate?
Nate.
Make a motion, the amendment be adopted and the zoning administrator be directed to enter the appropriate changes on the official zoning map. And that the auditor be directed to arrange for the publication of the amendment. And the portion of the official zoning map is amended in the official county newspapers as required by law.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second that the amendment be adopted. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, Nate?
Nate.
Motion carries.
I can have just one moment, please. So we have several people come in all the time and ask for things that we tell them don't meet the rules. And we explain to them what we feel the outcome will be. But it is not my job to tell them that they don't have the right to come in front of the zoning board and the supervisors. So respectfully, I will continue to offer people the right to come to you.
Thank you, Tammy. Moving forward, uh, have a resolution to approve the hiring of deputies assistants and clerks.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for the new position at Sunnycrest or the position at Sunnycrest.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the permanent part-time food service worker at Sunnycrest. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we have resolution to approve the lease agreement with the Iowa Department of Transportation. Uh, for the maintenance shed. There's any questions? Russell is here. If you wanna come up, Russ.
I'll pick a motion to approve the lease agreement.
I'll second with discussion from the county engineer, please.
Good morning. So, um, a little back history on this. Um, our mortar grater M seven has been out of the DOT facilities in Key West for numerous years. Um, obviously with the transfer for their, um, to their new facility is, it is a vacant facility. Um, they're in the process of be, um, the Key West being assessed for future sales. And we will be watching that, um, probably sometime in February, we'll probably know the amount of that. So after discussion with maintenance personnel at the state, we thought it would just be, uh. A cleaner, um, agreement to compose the lease. It's the first time it's happened, but ultimately he's staying in the same spot. And this lease was approved by CJ May and helpless Stella as far as like insurance and stuff goes. So everything looks acceptable for both parties. And if you have any further questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
There is no rental fee for this other than cost of.
Yes, that's correct. There are no rental fees. Ultimately, summarizing the lease quickly is, we're just gonna be responsible for all utilities. And if a door breaks down and we need to repair it, then we're responsible for repairing that door. Everything else is pretty cut and dry in typical lease agreement language.
A pretty good deal.
Yeah, I would say so.
Any other questions, room?
Yeah, no, it's just in discussion. It sounds like a good opportunity. Many times we we actually pay a lease fee for using a facility. And this is, uh, the state is providing it no charge, so.
That's good, good cooperation between state and county, which is absolutely what we like to see.
Okay, thank you very much, Russ.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second to approve the lease agreement with the Iowa Department of Transportation for the winter equipment parking. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we have a resolution to approve the necessary documents with Runde Chevrolet of East Dubuque for the purchase of. One twenty twenty-three model year, large, regular cab, four-wheel drive, eight-foot box, ten thousand pound gross vehicle weight. Pickup truck. That is for the County Roads Division. If anyone has questions, Russ is here again.
I have no questions.
Um, I'll, I'll just summarize this quick. Um, for items C, D and E. Um, the pickup trucks we brought to you, um, to go out for bid. We also, we bid it locally and we did one with the state, which was the first time. Um, ultimately, I think the consensus among amongst the board and ourselves was to try to go local. So I'm happy to let you guys know that we were able to successfully stay local with these bids. And I believe Brundy swept the board with all of them as well. And then so as far as the big state bid goes, we are currently in the process of canceling that order, which is an acceptable approach. We can just cancel the order. We're not buying to anything. We're not getting penalized, no fees or anything, so.
Okay. Well, like to hear that we were able to stay local.
Me too.
So was I. So, yeah, I know it's pretty hard to to stay local, so I'm glad you're able to accomplish that.
Yeah, but I appreciate your cooperation because it did give us the, um. You know, the broadness of being able to fill these orders and we felt these, this is what was needed within our fleet. So, um, I appreciate the cooperlessness. I hope to never have to go to bed, but it is a good resource that, um, you know, i- if need be in the future.
Agreed, but my, my lesson would be similar to having the conservation board. If you're patient and willing to work with your local vendors, they'll come through for you. So try not to bail to the state or other providers before that. Stay local, stay patient, and you'll be rewarded.
That, I, I, I agree with that as well.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for, uh, item C.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the necessary documents with Runde Chevrolet. For twenty twenty-three pickup. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we have a resolution to approve the necessary documents with Runde Chevrolet of East Dubuque for the purchase of one twenty twenty-three model year. Heavy-duty, regular cab, single rear wheel, four-wheel drive, eight-foot box, eleven thousand pound G V W R pickup truck.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the necessary documents with Runde for the second pickup. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we have a resolution to approve the necessary documents with Runde Chevrolet of East Dubuque for the purchase. For two twenty twenty-three model year, half-ton heavy-duty, four-wheel drive, extended cab. Six point five foot box, sixty-four hundred and eighty pound gross vehicle weight pickup trucks.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the necessary documents with Runde Chevrolet for the purchase of the two. Half-ton pickups. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you, Russ. Next, we have, uh, resolutions for the purchase of service swap. Contracts, uh, they're all under one, uh, resolution.
Supervisor Potoff, uh, it is not the swap. These are our, this is our standard purchase of service.
Oh, the purchaser, I'm sorry.
Unaffiliated with swap funds or A R P A funds.
Okay, this is for the purchase of service program. There's a total of five hundred and eighty-three thousand, five hundred and one dollars. Can go through and create Creative Adventure Lab for fifty thousand, Dubuque Area Labor Management Council, ten thousand. Dubuque County Early Childhood, uh, eighty thousand, E C I A is twenty-five thousand, five sixty-eight. Greater Dubuque Development Corporation, one hundred and eighty thousand, Habitat for Humanity, ten thousand. Hills and Dales, twenty thousand, Julian Dubuque International Film Festival, seven thousand, five hundred. Limestone Bluffs, R C and D, eight thousand, Northeast Iowa Area Agency on Aging, sixteen thousand, six seventy-eight. Opening doors, twenty thousand, River View Center, fifty thousand, Saint Mark Youth Enrichment, forty thousand. Travel Dubuque, sixty thousand, and Unity Point Health. Five thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five. Anyone have any discussion or concerns regarding those?
Motion to approve the resolution.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-three purchase of service program contracts. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Thank you for your work on those. I, Ed. Guess there was no questions, so unless you wanted.
I'm, I'm here for the next one too, just in case.
Uh, next, we have a resolution for the approval of the fiscal year twenty twenty-three purchase of service. County Fair contract for Dubuque County Fair Association.
The red in the documents throw me off. Is that intentional or is that just, uh?
I would remind Supervisor Wickham that I'm colorblind.
Okay.
So somehow in, in, in the office there this morning, I, I noticed that as well while I was looking in some different light. But that is strictly the fact that the, the copy that ultimately we move forward will not be black.
My apologies, and you overcome that so well that I didn't even remember.
I wear beige every day. Yes, I know. Um, the reason that this is a. That is actually the reason.
What is beige? I don't even know what beige is.
That the fair is separate from the purchase of services. There's actually, you, you have budgeted for that. Uh, in a different category of funds. We still call it purchase of service, but it is a different category. The other ones were part of that competitive fund.
And this was for twenty thousand dollars for Dubuque County Fair.
Which is what you had budgeted for, what they applied for. Sorry about the red.
No, yeah, no, no problem. Sorry, I, I just didn't know if it was a correction or possibly just a review thing. Um, certainly I'm in full favor of the, the, the fair board, uh, purchase of service for twenty thousand. It's, it's, it's pretty modest. Uh, I would encourage the board, uh, either during this session or, uh, the twenty twenty-three calendar session. To review, um, their ask for their roof. Um, I think we shortchanged them. Uh, they were one of the early applicants for the American Rescue Funds. And I'd encourage the board to circle back and see if we can help them with their, their current debt service on that. Um, which is tied to this, but not, uh, not up for discussion and resolution today.
Anything, Anne?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolutions for the, uh, Fair Board, uh, Association's purchase of service.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-three purchase of service, County Fair Contract. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye, carries. Thank you, Ed. Uh, for communications, we have consultation for the John F Kennedy Road Urban Renewal Area Plan. The city of Dubuque, and that's just, uh, basically a receive and file, correct?
I'll make a motion to receive and file the communication documents A and B.
Second that, noting I don't think we need to do that in the future. Is that correct? I just said, I think the auditors asked us not to take motions on this, but we're moving forward. So motion in a second before us.
Have a motion and a second to receive and file the urban renewal plan for John F Kennedy Road in the city. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we have appointments, open vacancies for information only. Have we received, uh, many applications? I guess you may not know that, I'm just not here.
We've had a couple, Roseanne's overseeing that process and we did put out the public notice and it was published in the T H. Um, I'm not sure that the doors are being knocked down with applicants, but I do believe we received a few.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Next, we'll move to the personnel requisitions. Have a maintenance worker two for the County Roads Division. Uh, that will due to her retirement, upcoming retirement at the end of the year.
I'll make a motion to approve the personnel requisition.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the personnel requisition for the permanent full-time maintenance person two. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. We have nothing tabled and pending. Go to the public comments. At this time, anyone may address the board on matters of which are of concern to that person and which are not agenda items. Please go to the podium, state your name and home address. Please be aware that the board is limited in their ability to respond to such inquiries. And Iowa code prohibits the board from deliberating or acting on items not appearing on the agenda. Individual remarks are limited to three minutes. Do we have anyone wishing to address the board?
Uh, Chair Potoff, this is Auditor Dragato. I would like to take a second if I may.
Yes, you may, sir.
I wanted to take a quick moment to thank Denise Stolen, uh, for coming back to help us. Out in the role of treasurer. Uh, for thirty-three years, she was the auditor. And, uh, she enjoyed a good twelve months of retirement. Uh, prior to us making a call to see if she could come back and help the county. And, uh, she did selfishly when I brainstormed the idea of reaching out to her. I also saw that I would have a colleague and an asset that I could tap for the last twelve months, uh, with questions that we had. And, uh, our office in the county is grateful that she has returned to help us out and we wish her the best in her future.
I would echo your sentiments. It is greatly appreciated that she came back to help us out in our time of need. She is a woman that, uh, obviously can handle several different aspects of the county business. And it was truly appreciated.
Yeah, just further on that point, um, you know, so if you look back over the, her tenure. Uh, there was actually five almost full-time positions currently being occupied today that she at one time managed and led. Certainly the, the auditor for many years, but, uh, the budget director, uh, responsible for facilities, responsible for I T and G I S as well. Certainly didn't do all those roles herself, but had management and leadership experience in, in all five of those. And now we have, uh, additional leaders in those roles. So, um, yeah, if I would point to one person over the county here that's, uh, really quote carried the water over the years, it would be Denise Dolan.
She's been a wonderful mentor and I appreciate everything Denise has done.
Any further remarks? No one in chambers, anyone online?
There is nobody online indicating they would like to speak.
Good. You need a break or just?
I'm good.
All right, we'll move to our nine-thirty work session. We're running about twenty minutes behind. Uh, I have a work session for the update on the Dubuque County Coordinator of Disability Services. I believe May is on.
Yes, good morning. So I'm, I'm sorry, I can't be with you in person this morning. I'm actually in a hotel room in New Orleans for, um, the National Dialogue on Behavioral Health Conference. So I stepped out of the conference quick to, and I'm just to offer an update this morning on the quarter Coordinator of Disability Services position for Dubuque County. If you remember the last time that I spoke with you about filling the position. I went through that we have a policy for the region that has come, come into play in two different ways. Um, the first, first part of the policy is that when we have an opening for a coordinator role. That I have to offer it to the current coordinator team to see if anyone step, wants to step into that policy. In addition, the second part of the policy is that in September of every even year. We do an evaluation of our coordinator roles to see if what we're doing is what fits our needs. So, um, coincidentally, we had an opening in Dubuque County in. So, um, coincidentally, we had an opening in Dubuque County in September, so that the timing really worked out well. So I did offer the position of contracting coordinator, which was the Dubuque coordinators', um, role. And I had a coordinator who expressed interest in fulfilling the role of the contracting coordinator. So, and also with the process of reviewing our coordinators' needs. As an administrative team, we made the decision that we would be combining provider relations and, and contracting together. Those roles overlap so much that with the, the workload of contracting and the part of it was the really great clerical support that we have, that we were going to create or to combine those two roles. So Peggy Petlon, who is our coordinator in Manchester and Delaware County, will be stepping into the role of both provider relations and contracting. So Peggy did provider relations previously. Um, at that point, then I had to, um, well, we did the evaluation of our coordinator roles. And we developed a new coordinator role called, called Access Coordinator. And the Access Coordinator will be responsible for overseeing our jail services, our justice-involved services, our crisis services, and addressing issues related in the strategic plan to access to services. Um, some of that is that outreach to healthcare and education and law enforcement, that's justice-involved, as well as social determinants of health and helping to envision new services and outreach for the region. So when we had that new role, it's like a domino effect that what happened, when we had that role available, I opened it up the administrative team to see if somebody was interested in stepping into that role. At that point, Jody Bridgewater, who was our coordinator and coordinator. And after a meeting with me and discussion with the Lynn County Supervisors, then, um, we made the decision for Jody to step into the role of Access Coordinator, which left Jody's role open, which is evidence-based practices and quality assurance. So then I opened that position up to the administrative team. And, um, I, everyone feels settled where they're at, so nobody expressed interest in moving into evidence-based practices and, and, um, quality assurance. So the update is the evidence-based practices and quality assurance is the role that we have open that we would like to advertise for the Dubuque County Coordinator of Disability Services. I feel really positive about that. Jody came to us from a provider agency and really knew, you know, the ins and outs of evidence-based practices and quality assurance. So I feel hopeful that we will have a really good candidate for Dubuque County Coordinator to fill that role, too. Um, you know, that perhaps maybe in, and in this day and age of workforce, we kind of mine from one another, and we might be able to, um, attract somebody who comes from the provider network or maybe has previous leadership experience. So we'll see. So that, that's my update, and I, I just wanted to let you know where we're at in the process. I understand you have a new HR director that will be starting, I think, at the end of the month. So right around that time, I would like to submit a personnel requisition, and then we'll get started with advertising and, um, interviewing for the position of Coordinator of Disability Services for Dubuque County.
May, that, good morning, Anne. I just wanted to, um, make note, and maybe you can address briefly with the board. The region is going to be paying one hundred percent of the compensation of this new coordinator position. There won't be any the, the budgeting that the county did with our own funds that will be, that will no longer be an option.
Yes, at your request, the last time we talked about this, um, we can do a hundred percent that this will be a hundred percent regionally funded.
Okay. You had me a little confused here.
It's a complicated process, isn't it?
Peggy Pendleton is going to move to what?
Um, Peggy Petlon will be contracting and provider relations. And then Jody Bridgewater from Lynn County will be the new role of Access Coordinator. So that left the role that Jody was doing open, which was evidence-based practices and quality assurance. And I have that job description pulled up if you want to look at it, if you want to see what we'll be looking for for the Dubuque County Coordinator.
Okay, so we don't have anybody for the Dubuque County Coordinator yet?
Correct. Yep, yep, yeah. I want to keep you informed before we move forward with hiring somebody. So this, today was just a little just dis- discussion to let you know the process and where we're at. And like I said, in a couple of weeks, when the new HR person is, um, here and ready, then I'll submit a personnel requisition, and we can get going with the hiring process.
Okay, my bad. I just got confused. I was thinking Peggy was taking that, you're going down the line. I get, I got lost.
Yeah, Peggy stayed put in Delaware County.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
No.
Yeah, May, um, the previous coordinator here in Dubuque County also used um, time that the county paid for to do the disability services programming. And we also are going to begin to do the work of, of the co-occurring disorders with substance misuse and brain health. How those are almost always directly tied. Uh, what is the region going to do about those needs in Dubuque County?
So that, that's a really good question, Supervisor McDonough. You know, historically speaking, from a regional perspective, when we carved out, um, a portion of the coordinator salaries, it's when they have a different job, so to speak, of MHD services. For example, so when we have coordinators who are the general assistance director or the veterans affairs coordinators in other counties, we carve their salaries out. Anything that's related to disabilities is really regional work. I mean, it's regional work in the county, but it's on behalf of the region, anything that's mental health and disability services. So Disabilities Council is still regional work, and that wasn't something that, that Dubuque County was paying for, was the carve-out. The carve-outs specifically was for the twenty percent for substance use disorder. And, um, to, to, to answer that a little bit, I, I don't know that we have the, the timer, the commitment. We'll see with the person that we have hired and the skill set to coordinate maybe as much of the legislative priority, and we have a priority initiative this year around co-occurring disorders. About making sure that we're integrating brain health and substance use disorders, um, not just we're advocating our priority initiative and our legislative priority is about policy and about funding. But our commitment also is to look at ourselves and our own policy and what we're doing to integrate co-occurring disorders. So I think that'll be happening in Dubuque County, and it'll be happening all across the region as well.
So the, the follow-up to that, May, is that, um, you know, who's going to be the point person with the disability council? We, you know, we're doing much-needed work. And you and I have talked about this, that we don't want that to stop, but who's going to be that liaison person?
Yeah, and I, I've had the commitment all along that that will be the new coordinator when we have a coordinator hired. That will be part of his or her role, because it's, it's MHD services on behalf of the region. So absolutely.
So we, I will want to see the job description, and we'll want to take a look at that, just to be sure that we've got those needs addressed. Not that I doubt you, but that will be, um, something we want to put in a job description for us.
Yeah, and I, I believe the job description, you know, I mean, we'll include that when I do the personnel requisition, so you'll have yeah, every opportunity to give feedback on that.
Excellent.
Okay. Jay, anything? Anything further?
Thank you, May.
Thank you, Mick. You can go back to your train.
Thank you. Have a great day.
You, too. Move forward to our nine-forty-five work session with the DRA. Kathy. Welcome.
Well, thank you, uh, for allowing me to come. Um, today I just wanted to come to share everything that has been happening with, uh, DRA, uh, Schmidt Island over the last year. Um, okay, I'm Kathy Burr, Director of Strategic Philanthropy and Schmidt Island Development for the DRA. Um, and again, I appreciate the opportunity to come and share. Uh, we do have a video on our website. It's the Who is the DRA? I won't share that. It's about three minutes long. But if you do get the opportunity, it talks about the history of the DRA and the impact that the DRA has had on the community, uh, since its inception back in nineteen eighty-five. Excellent. Um, our mission, vision, and values. So last year around this time, um, we sat down with the Community Foundation and did a full philanthropic review, um, for the DRA to really look at our charitable giving, look at our organization as a whole, and take a step back and make that decision and put that plan forward on what we want to be as we're moving forward into the future. We've been around thirty-five, forty years. We're going to be around a lot longer, so it was a perfect time with Greyhound Racing leaving the facility for us to take a step back and really look at everything that we wanted to accomplish. Our mission, um, is simply the DRA through its gaming and entertainment facilities provides for social, economic, and community betterment and lessens the burden of Dubuque city and area government while contributing to the growth and viability of Dubuque area tourism. And our vision is that we're a dynamic community resource, acting as a catalyst to enhance the quality of life and financial well-being for the tri-state community. For those of you that may not be a hundred percent familiar with the DRA, our funding comes solely from operations at Q Casino, and then we're also the qualified sponsoring organization, QSO for the Diamond Joe here in Dubuque. So we're funded solely by the two casinos here in Dubuque. Uh, our mission and vision, it didn't change. We sat together with our Board of Directors, um, members of the community, as well as leaders from both of the organizations and as well as grant recipients, and we really just reaffirmed that mission and vision. And then we created a set of values to help us move forward, the, them being community, growth, impact, integrity, vision, and equity. Next slide. We are ran by a Board of Directors. We have twenty-one unpaid members. The City of Dubuque has representation with Mike Van Milligan, City Manager, as well as three city council, including Mayor Brad Kavanaugh, Councilman Rick Jones, and Councilman Danny Sprank. Dubuque County Board of Supervisors, uh, we're lucky to have Harley sit on our board. Uh, we have had the county supervisors as part of our board, um, since we have been around. We did have one year where a supervisor was not assigned to the board, I'm sorry, two years. One year that seat sat empty. The following year, uh, Daryl Klein sat in that position as a citizen, but filled that seat, seat for the county supervisors. We have sixteen additional citizens of the City of Dubuque and the surrounding areas. One of the requirements to be on the board, um, with Iowa statute is they must be an Iowa resident. With our board, they serve a three-year term. There is no limit on the number of terms. And we actually still have one of our original board members from nineteen eighty-four, Ron Harrig, who is still incredibly active, uh, with the Board of Directors at meetings, as well as events within the community. And the, the DRA is a five-oh-one C four organization. Our leadership team, um, it has evolved over the last about year and a half. Alex Dixon joined us back in August of last year. Um, and it has been a whirlwind, um, of a year and a half with him being here, all in, all in great ways. Uh, he really lit a spark and has helped move the organization forward as Greyhound Racing is leaving and helping figure out plans for moving forward into the future. Brian Rakestras been with the organization over, uh, twenty years. Stacy is our Chief Commercial Officer. She's all things marketing, and she just joined the organization a few months ago, moving here from Florida. Myself, I've been with the organization just over five years. Tammy Schnein, HR, and Teresa Heber, Director of Finance, who has been with the organization since nearly the beginning. Our structure at the DRA, we own and operate the Q Casino in Hilton Garden Inn, and we manage the Dubuque Ice Arena, which is the formerly Mystique Community Ice Center. Uh, sixty million each year in net revenue, uh, little bit more information on there. We have our DRA grants and endowment, which would, would be the charitable side, as well as the newly created, uh, Schmidt Island Development Corporation, which is a standalone five-oh-one C three that was recently created. Since inception, we've had over a billion dollars in economic activity. As many of you probably remember in the mid-eighties, um, Dubuque was coming, going through a hard time, and really the dog track, um, us being there has, had sparked, uh, in the community to really help turn things around. It's been thirty-five years, uh, with that one billion dollars, and I have a feeling we can get to two billion a lot quicker than thirty-five years. Along with the review of our philanthropic strategy, we did a rebrand of DRA. So we were, uh, known as Dubuque Racing Association. Legally, we will continue to be Dubuque Racing Association, but we've rebranded just as DRA. With dog racing leaving, we wanted to assure the community and the nonprofits that DRA is here and we're here to stay. Um, and then we also created a partner brand, because we did not want to be the organization that just hands out checks every year. We wanted to partner with the organizations and let them know that DRA isn't just that funding source. We're also a partner to here, uh, here in town to help accomplish those goals that we have. We did a refresh of our website as well, created some really great videos. So if you do have time to go to our website, I would encourage you to do that. We have a lot of strategic partnerships here in town. We partner very, very close with the City of Dubuque. Our lease that we have with them as a property that we sit on is owned by the City of Dubuque. They do receive monthly distributions as well as annual payments, uh, at the end of the year, based on the money that we have available, um, bottom line. Last year, we had over just, we had over twelve million, so the city did receive an additional four million dollars as their one-third distribution last year. With the Community Foundation, we hold an endowment fund. It was opened in twenty-eleven, and to date, we have just over six million dollars in the fund. Um, we will eventually come up with a goal, but short-term goal that we're hoping to accomplish over the next ten to fifteen years is to get that endowment built up so that we can distribute an additional million dollars a year out to those local nonprofits. Currently, our distribution this year through our endowment fund was just over two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. The charitable, charitable distributions, what did we do new in two thousand and twenty-two? Um, we wanted to refocus our grant program and have it aligned with the mission, not only of the DRA, but also the City of Dubuque and other local partners, including Greater Dubuque Development. So we focused our grant program this year on people attraction, and that would include population growth, retention, and tourism. And we wanted to get away from more of those material purchases and really get to the root of the organization and their needs to continue to move forward. Uh, we wanted to simplify the ask process for the organizations. We had a pretty complicated application, a financial worksheet that gave everybody a headache. Uh, so we simplified that process. We made it a lot easier. Uh, not only for the applicants, but also our review committee. Uh, going into two thousand and twenty-three, we're looking at updating the program that we use, uh, which will simplify the process even more. And we wanted to give, uh, preference to applications that included capacity building alongside of material purchases. We split the program into two different programs. We have our core grants and our mission grants. Our core grant is the traditional grant program that we've done every single year. So as we move forward, we're planning on the first million dollars of our distributions to charitable will go to that core grant program. Applications can be up to fifty thousand dollars. Uh, and we are providing payment on the front side of the award rather than on the back end. So if an organization receives a fifty thousand dollar award, they'll get their check in August. They'll have one year to provide a summary report in order to be able to reapply for funds the following year. But rather than making the organizations pay for everything and then come back to us with receipts, we're putting more trust in the organizations, which is allowing them to do more, especially if it's a smaller nonprofit that may not have that twenty-five thousand. We also eliminated our matching funds. In the past, anything over ten thousand dollars, we required twenty-five percent match. This year, we eliminated that from the, okay, from the equation. It's great if an organization can have match or work with other organizations, but we don't want that to be the reason that they can't accomplish a project or a program. And then this year, we also had mission grants, which we will have moving forward as well. And those are applications between fifty and five hundred thousand. It starts with a simple paper application, electronic application. And the second phases of that is where they come in and meet with our grant review committee and do a, a presentation followed by Q and A. In two thousand and twenty-two, through our competitive grant process and our endowment fund, uh, we've received over two-hundred-and-twenty-three qualifying applications. We awarded seventy-five grants. Uh, and the grant amount was just over three-point-one million. Our endowment contribution was just over one-point-two million. So in total for two thousand and twenty-three. So in total for twenty-twenty-three, or I'm sorry, twenty-twenty-two, our charitable distribution was just over four-point-three million dollars back to the community. And I'm just going to do a quick overview of Schmidt Island and what we have going on down there. The Schmidt Island, we have a master plan that was created back in twenty-fourteen, revised in twenty-seventeen, and adopted by Dubuque City Council and made a strategic priority. So the mission down there is a connected island that welcomes visitors and community to recreation, entertainment, and the outdoors. Our vision is we're Dubuque's gateway to entertainment and the Mississippi. We have a standalone five-oh-one C three, the Schmidt Island Development Corporation, where I sit as president of that board. Along with myself, we have representation from Travel Dubuque, the Mississippi River Museum and Aquarium, Greater Dubuque Development, Dubuque School Board, Loris College, the city of Dubuque, as well as John Deere. But the objectives of of this group is to help facilitate the redevelopment of Schmidt Island. We will manage the city assets on Schmidt Island, and we will facilitate charitable contributions for implementation of that Schmidt Island Master Plan. Here is a chart. I can share this presentation with the group that you can go through. But we put this together just to identify what the organization is, what the purpose is, and then the governance of that with the DRA, Q Casino, Schmidt Island Development Committee, which is actually a subcommittee of the DRA Board that manages that one-third of distributions, as well as the Schmidt Island Development Corporation. And this chart here just goes over the management for the Dubuque Ice Arena. Again, the relationship between the city, Schmidt Island Development Corporation, and the DRA Board. The council-approved Schmidt Island Master Plan goals includes connecting the riverfront, celebrating the island's islandness, being able to put your feet in the water, and spending the day, night, and visit in any season. So those are really the goals that the Schmidt Island Development Corporation has been tasked with. We have been working together very closely with the city of Dubuque. They re, they secured a two-point-three-million-dollar roadway project that, you know, hopefully we can receive final funding of that, but it will help not only with access down to Schmidt Island, but access down to lower downtown Dubuque as well. Right now, pedestrian access to the island is not real great, but we really want to be able to to connect Schmidt Island to the rest of Dubuque. Additionally, there's a two-point-three-million-dollar raise grant, as well as a six-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand-dollar trail project that was secured by Representative Ashley Hinson, and that project will be kicking off here soon. We have Veterans Memorial, which was the first project that was completed down on Schmidt Island. It was a three-point-four-million-dollar project. We held the ribbon-cutting back in twenty-twenty-one on Memorial Day, and that project was funded one-hundred percent by the DRA. And we have a Destination Iowa Grant application that was submitted several weeks ago that will help us to accomplish those goals that we have down on Schmidt Island. The application, the request was just over seven million with total of eighteen million dollars and of investment, and the project is to be completed in twenty-twenty-five. The Schmidt Island Master Plan goals, again, we talked about those already, but this application that we submitted will help accomplish those goals. There is just a rendering of what Schmidt Island could look like. You can see the Veterans Memorial down in the bottom center, the ball fields off to the right-hand side, as well as the casino complex in the back. The project components for the Destination Iowa was developing an outdoor performing arts amphitheater, so that would take the place of the current location of the dog track that sits behind Q Casino. And the other would be to improve and develop trail connectivity and signage. We've had the opportunity to host several groups down on Schmidt Island recently, including young professionals, as well as the leadership Dubuque classes, and we've taken them on walks around the island. And one of the comments that they always have is, you don't even know that there's trails down here. So increasing the signage, making the island more connected. As you can see in this picture here, it has an iconic Iowa sign. So think of, you know, the Las Vegas sign where people go get that picture. It doesn't cost anything. But really letting people know that sense of arrival and taking pride in the location that we're at. And I appreciate the time, and I, if you do have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
And we'll start with you.
Good to see you again.
You as well, Ann. Thank you.
No questions. Thanks for the update.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kathy. You made reference to Alex being a spark. Like a stick of dynamite. It's not a.
Yes, you're right. You're right.
It has been very rewarding being on the board. Thank you for your leadership and keeping things moving forward.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Everybody good to keep moving? Next, we'll go to our ten a.m. work session, discuss the external ARP A application from the city of Asbury.
Good morning. It's good to see you.
You, Beth.
Good morning. I have a flash drive too, if that would work. Supervisors, Kevin, I'm Beth Bonds. I'm the city administrator for the city of Asbury, and this is Nate Stevenson. He's with MSA to handle all the details on the project type questions. Yes, you have our application before you, and what we're presenting is a request for funding for the sanitary sewer portion of a road project on Hales Mill Road. And the sanitary sewer project does meet the criteria for COVID funding as an investment in sewer infrastructure and sewer infrastructure, and this project is shovel-ready. We anticipate that we will do construction in twenty-twenty-three. There are twenty-seven impacted properties. The estimated total cost of this project is three-point-one million dollars. The reconstruction is Hales Mill Road between Brick Mason Lane and Park Place to just north of the Hales Mill Road, Asbury Road intersection in the city of Asbury. And it's a thirty-seven-foot-wide roadway. And part of the project is replacing the sanitary sewer main, including private laterals for an estimated cost of nine-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand dollars. And we will also replace and upgrade storm sewer infrastructure. In there, we show a project overview with a green line being the project area in the city of Asbury. Nate, you want to go through why the sewer improvements are necessary?
It's just coming up here. So we should be on slide number six right now.
So there's the project area.
Good morning. As Beth said, I'm Nate Stevenson with MSA. I primarily function as the city engineer for the city of Asbury. As you can see, the main goal or objective of this project is the reconstruction of Hales Mill Road. The street has deteriorated, especially with joint failure. Anytime we come across a a street reconstruction project, we always have to step back and look at the utilities in the area to see if there's improvements we can make with those as well while the whole street is torn up. When we looked at that here, there is a long stretch of sanitary force main that runs from the Radford Road Lift Station, kind of between, I'd say, like Roosevelt School and Asbury Road. It runs all the way up along Hales Mill Road and then down to the Hales Mill Lift Station. We plan to abandon about five thousand feet of that force main that was installed many years ago. It's deteriorating. It has failed in a number of locations that the city has had to patch recently. So now is the time to get rid of that. With that being said, when we get rid of the force main, we have to then carry that flow some other way. We're going to look to dump that force main into gravity flow near the Asbury Road, Hales Mill Road intersection and run it to the lift station via gravity flow. Because the existing eight-inch sanitary line underneath Hales Mill Road is not sized to take that additional flow from the lift station. We do need to upsize that to twelve inches for the gravity flow sewer. And that's where we're we're coming in to ask for the funding to upsize that sewer and accommodate that additional flow in this corridor. And then just a few notes regarding the project timeline here. We're currently in the phase where we've just wrapped up final plans, specifications, and the form of a cost estimate. And a notice to bidders is going to be sent out via the Iowa DOT. Public hearing is going to be coming up regarding plans and specifications at the next Asbury Council meeting here on, I believe, the twenty-second of this month. And then that'll be the public hearing. We plan to open bids that that date should actually be December twentieth. It was updated here, but it must not have been on the flash drive. So we're opening bids on December twentieth of this year, and then we're going to award the project actually in January of twenty-twenty-three. And then the project will start, as Beth said, a shovel-ready. Basically, we're going to be starting in the spring right away when the weather allows us to. And then the project will be completed in the fall winter of twenty-twenty-three. We will inspect and certify the project when it's done, and then the council will then accept the work towards the end of next year.
And of course, how do we plan to fund this project? It's overall three-point-one million dollars. So we plan to use state transportation funding for a million of that project, as well as a million in TIF for that our city funds. And then the remaining estimated would come from general funds and from sewer revenue funds if we do not receive the ARPA funds that our request is for. So that's pretty quick. This account, does the supervisors have any questions for us?
Well, welcome to my friends and neighbors. I appreciate you being here. You've asked in your ARPA grant for over seven-hundred-thousand dollars in funding, I believe. Ed, what was the number, seven-hundred? What's the amount that's requested in the ARPA grant?
Nine forty-three.
Nine forty-three oh seventy-three.
In that far, that thus far exceed what we have remaining in the ARPA budget. I'm just wondering if there's other numbers that are helpful. This is not as sexy as the park projects that we've helped other communities with, so.
Not a sexy project, but if you look at your application, your application says, under ARPA usage, support public health response, address negative economic inputs, replace lost public sector revenue, provide premium-paying essential workers, invest in water sewer and broadband infrastructure. And nowhere in this, you know, I mean, I'm glad you're funding the the pretty projects, but right now we don't have a pretty project. We have one that is under the ARPA usage requirement. That's why we're requesting those funds, and any amount of funds would be greatly appreciated.
No real hard questions, but if you can bring up the map, where where's your lift station at? So wasn't on the map. And then I love the roundabout. I'm curious when that's going in.
Play it for twenty-twenty-six.
Right, like that.
Thank you. There's a exhibit that is up currently, and there is a red line that is approximately the corner of Hales Mill Road and Autumn Drive, and there's a gravity sewer that then flows about what, half a mile, quarter of a mile down to our Hales Mill Lift Station?
Yeah, so the red line on this image is the existing force main that we plan to abandon, which is near the Asbury Road-Hales Mill intersection. And then the the northwest end of that red line is where the Hales Mill Lift Station is located. The Radford Lift Station is actually even further yet to the south from where the roundabout's located there along Radford Road. But we are abandoning a sizable section of that old force main.
And the, I assume the sewer department is like an enterprise fund, so it's contained within itself. It's not commingled with your general budget?
Correct, but sometimes we use other funds to help assist with the utility projects.
Correct, and so all of those homes, all those taxpayers, all those citizens of Dubuque County are contributing to to this sewer project, not to this project, but continuing on a monthly basis to sewer operations. As far as their their income. So so you have a, you know, just by the map itself, a very sizable number of homes and taxpayers, Dubuque County taxpayers that are contributing to this project already and into the operations.
Correct. You would have to even like the whole project is three million dollars. So really, the whole city of Asbury and, you know, state are all contributing to, you know, the whole of this project, not not just the, you know, twenty-seven homes that are, you know, affected, you know, by the project. Hales Mill Road is, you know, considering a arterial road, and it does take a lot of traffic.
Water and sewer projects, you're you're all in together, you know, wherever you live in the city, in whatever city it is, you're 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 tied to your neighbor. And each individual pays their individual water and sewer fee. So much different than Parks and Rec. That be true?
That would be true.
Yeah, so we've we've funded a lot of Parks and Rec programs, which are wonderful. I've supported those. You know, you know, sewer and water is is paid and contributed by taxpayers on a on a monthly basis. And so I want to make sure the board does understand that. So I I fully support your project. I I think it's a it's this is your highest priority or what you wanted to present to us. I'm very supportive. And while I love baseball fields and many other projects we've done, if this is one that would be to make a difference to Asbury, you have my support, and we do have funding. And so the county does have funding. We did transfer over ten million dollars to our general basic fund. And so we have available funding to fund this for your citizens, which are also Dubuque taxpayer citizens.
And also to answer your question, Nate did have this little Hales Mill Road three-leg roundabout. Twenty-twenty-six is when that is projected to go in. And the reason for twenty-twenty-six is, again, we have ST, we have surface transportation funds that go to that, and and you sit on the DMATs board, and that's when, on that budget, that's when that's programmed in.
How's your growth been as far as the city?
Uh, see, our twenty, we had a special census in twenty-sixteen, and we were at just over forty-two-hundred, and our twenty-twenty-one census numbers when they came out were just shy of six thousand.
Fair to say, you're, Asbury is one of the fastest-growing communities in Dubuque County.
That's correct.
Correct, yeah. And then seventy-five percent of all the new development of tax development, over seventy-five percent of the new tax rolls that Dubuque County receives has been from the Western Expansion Growth Communities, Asbury leading it, followed by Jossette Upworth Farley and Dyersville. So once again, I encourage my board not to to the short-changed the city of Asbury because they were last in. We do have funds. They're not the board supervisors' funds, so there's, they're the county taxpayers' funds. And we could fully support this project, and and I would would encourage the board to do so.
Thank you, Jay.
I would. It's a big project. I understand that, Beth. When it comes to the ARP funds, obviously, as Ann stated, we don't have enough to cover the whole project, your whole ask. We will have to decide how we want to work that because there are a lot of issues that we have to deal with here at the courthouse also, which I'm sure you've heard, H-VAC and everything is in need of serious repair, which is going to cost the taxpayers a lot of money. So
So, yes, I'm kind of stuck at, you know, do we use some of the ARP funds to help us out? Or do we use them to help you out and then the taxpayers have to pay all of this? So there'd have to be a lot of discussion on it, but it's a good project. I wish we could fund it all, but I don't think that's, can be done right now.
I understand, and like I said, any, any amounts would be greatly appreciated.
And while I'm a resident of Asbury, if I evaluate this, I would have no conflict of interest as just a resident in also supporting this project, and I intend to do that as well. I think that there's equity in addressing the needs of all of our communities. This is not, uh, you know, that Asbury has challenges as well, and this is another big financial tackle, as is the turnaround, the, the.
Roundabout.
Thank you. So, um, but I don't perceive there to be a conflict as I looked at that, so.
Anything further, Jay?
What's the, uh, timeline and process for the board to move forward with this? Do we want to deliberate another week or? I don't see action on this application, but discussion. Get with that, yeah.
Good with that?
When would we be deciding?
Week to two weeks, whatever, Kevin, uh, can get it on the agenda or we just have, uh?
Yeah, we can, uh.
We need Stella back. We need a budget director update on the funds. We need to see projections, I think of, of the, some of the things we've asked to have funded, like, did we get a person in the budget department? I mean, that's an unknown, um, you know, and maybe there's going to be an update from Ed or someone as to.
I would say we'd have to look at two weeks because Stella's gone this week.
Yeah, and, and, uh, there are some extenuating circumstances that may affect whether or not we have a meeting at the end of this month. So until those circumstances are ironed out, we will, um, I would recommend that we sort of pump the brakes just for a week or two until we can see what the schedule's going to look like for the board.
I would like to see this, uh, all of the ARPA grants be concluded and completed in terms of paperwork and voting under the current board. It would be nice to have those things be, uh, decided and have that program be launched by the end of this year.
I would agree with that. Yeah, so, you know, I mean, our responsibility, the supervisors to understand the budget. Stella just gave us a budget amendment two weeks ago. I'm looking at it right now. Um, our fund balances are healthy, have been during my seven years. I've encouraged the board as they continue forward to keep them that way, uh, the city of Asbury's project won't influence that. Our fund balances are dealing with tens of millions. You should learn them, you should stare at them, you should know them, they're healthy, the money's there. So to hold Asbury on, hey, you know, we might have to do some HVAC stuff and or, you know, the money might run out or we need the budget director here, uh, I just don't buy. So if you're a student at home, um, we're, we're in a good shape. Uh, we can afford to support this project without a lot of angst and encourage the board to do that.
We would probably be looking at at least three weeks, if not four, because the fifth is also a, a day that could be affected, but we could do it on the fifth.
Also do it in January with a new board, if you'd like that.
On the 5th of December. There's going to be some issues here the next three weeks.
Yeah, let's, uh, until we know more about the supervisor's schedule and location over the next three weeks, it'll be difficult. We should have some, I should have some resolution as to where the board will be meeting and if, if we need to move to a different location. But I'll have that resolution within.
It will be.
You're welcome to use our programming room.
An asbestos leak or something, okay? Happy to hear that.
Thank you, Beth. Thank you, Nate.
Motion to recess for 10 minutes.
I will second.
A motion to second recess for 10 minutes, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. We will return at 10:45.
Uh, during this recess, I will.